We will call this council committee meeting to order and we will start with the nominations committee and Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Prokoun, appreciate it. Nominations Committee is going to consider four different items this evening. One of those, the first one up is the Nominations Committee Staff Report and this is by Ellen Barnes. And Ellen, if I'm gonna go ahead with this.
Okay.
The Marla Bush, and Marla's not here, is she? I think she is. Marla Bush had reached out to the staff and as you can see, and to propose developing a Facebook page based on the Texas Historical Commission findings of downtown historical district. And the designation that was made, the included in that is about thirty-five blocks is designated historical district downtown. She's proposed a two-month engagement, willing to negotiate the cost, basically, two thousand dollars is what she proposed to me. I vested at her, with her at length, I know that she's probably vested with some other members of this council that have mentioned it to me. She, I asked her three different things for my visit. One, I asked her to put it in an email form, in written form, to us for consideration. And she indicated that she had visited with Ellen and Jason and myself and wasn't willing to do that. And I said, okay, you can come to the committee meeting. And she said that she wasn't interested in coming and presenting to the committee. And I said, okay. I said, the normal way to handle a project like this is for it to go to the board that reports to the nominations committee. And that is the Main Street Board. And then I would suggest that you make arrangements with the Main Street Board to be on their agenda for the next meeting. And make your presentation to the Main Street Board and then the Main Street Board can, if they prove it, then they can come to us. And then we can consider it and then ask for her to take it along with the council. She said, no, she wasn't interested. She didn't want to have anything to do with Main Street Board, were the exact words. And so, I said, okay, well, I think those are the three options that you've got. And I would certainly be more than glad to have you come to the committee meeting and present. And so, I didn't know really whether she was going to come or not. And so, I guess not. So, anyway, that's an update for this committee. Have we have further contact with her, with the committee agreeing that it needs to go through the Main Street Board?
Yes.
Yes, sir. I think that would be the appropriate avenue for that.
Yes.
I agree.
Well, without doing any kind of vote or anything, that is my, what I will tell her and if she gets back in touch with us. And Ellen, if she gets back in touch with the staff here or you or whatnot, same thing.
Yes, sir.
Our, we feel like it best if it goes through the proper channels and that would be through the Main Street Board. Okay?
Yes, sir.
The next item on the agenda is the review of the council rules of procedure. We first started looking at this in February and this is very similar to what we looked at at that point. There have been some changes and, everybody have a copy of it in front of them? The committee, I think you all did. The council rules for procedure really haven't been substantively changed since about 2008, 2010, I guess. This particular version is about 2018. There was a minor change in 2016 to it and whatnot. But it's been basically, we haven't really looked at the entire thing. We only picked out a couple of little items and things like that as it's gone. So, this is off of the 2018 version. And what we've done is to try to go through this, as we suggested to the committee that we would, and take out those things that are redundant, take out and put in the things that are required by state statute because that needs, because it didn't really flow with the state statute. And so, the things that you see marked in red and the first one is section two, general rule, is 2.2. It deals with if forum is not present, those attendants will be named, maybe may hear business before it's not done. And so, that is taken out, frankly, because it's not been the process that we've gone through. Compelling attendance is the same thing. That was frankly, takes back quite a while. Frankly, back to, I think I was still probably to maybe Don Davis or the city manager back then. And we meant to try to force people to go to committee meetings and board meetings and things like that. And we already have that process in place because now we've got, if you miss a certain number of meetings, well then and you're on a board or commission or anything like that, it shows up and it's presented back to the nominations committee and whatnot. And same thing goes, I mean, we take attendance at the city council meetings too and those are always available to you when you want to work in. And under item in this, for giving this is the numbering system, but if you go down to 1.6, but that is just a change. We still have city administrator in here and city manager. And that changed quite a few years ago. And so, we need to, in order to update that, we take out the administrator and put in the manager. And you'll see that a recurring theme throughout these, throughout this, rules of procedure. The next major thing is under special meetings, under section three, types of meetings. An addition, council members may only state the reason for the called meeting when contacting other council members. No further discussion may take place regarding the subject of the meeting. That's pretty much as the, it's the Texas open meetings and whatnot to say. The, going down through there, you see, call for a special meeting, you file with secretary, accept the announcement of a special meeting. Regular meeting and so forth, we're following the rule, it's a redundant thing. And again, under 3.2, the manager change. Under, same thing under 3.5, under executive sessions, which is 3.6, we need to align this with the Texas government code. And that's chapter 551 and this is basically the exact thing that the code requires. Under, under section five, which is on page five, under section five, there is several things and those are primarily what we do right now, being put in. It's under the agenda of the city council. Right now, we're following the agenda as you see it there, even though in the original, it wasn't, originally it wasn't like that. It was the proclamations and recognitions and presentations which we do at the beginning after the invitation. We need to put that in. That was done at other items, other times. Citizens' general discussion, we do that now. Regular agenda items is number six and the planning and zoning commission items is number seven. Comments by the city manager and his report, his/her report, comments by council members. In this particular item, we discussed a little bit at the last time. But we have, under here, instead of reading comments by council members, we make another suggestion here that we make this as comments by council members and items for future consideration. In other words, so, and under down, that is normally held under 5.3. But if we eliminate 5.3, we put it back in here under comments by council members and items for future consideration. Not discussion, but items for future consideration where council members can individually bring up something that they felt like needs to be addressed, either by committee or by the council on some day in the future. And that's how it gets out there before. We find that a lot of other cities do that very kind thing. And as a way of giving you more than just saying congratulations to the team, which is important, or to something good that's happened in the community, which is good. And we make those comments, but also it's a time for us in formal session to be able to say, you know, we've been contacted by so-and-so or we have noticed that something needs to be addressed and we would ask that that be considered by a, or referred to a committee in the future for, to bring it back to the council. And so, that's items for future consideration. Under the 5.2, it's just changing as to who does what, instead of city administrator, secretary. The, under the, also under 5.2, you'll notice a change from the agenda delivered to council members at least 24 hours. The change to 72 hours beforehand. In other words, when it comes time to post, there's no reason why the agenda at all can't be sent out to the council members at the very same time. Okay? I think this was the point that was brought up by one of the council members, that we need to have the full agenda beforehand. Well, it was written in here at 24 hours. Well, that needs to be changed to 72 hours. Okay? The, under item, oh, under the same item, the order of the agenda may be, agenda may be adjusted by the mayor as situation warrant. The mayor shall announce the opening of the meeting and the items which have been removed. That was a point that we were specifically asked to look at and everything. There's two ways to be done. Either the mayor can remove an agenda item or change the agenda, adjust the agenda as situations warrant. If something new comes up or something comes up at the last minute. Or the chairman of whatever committee is going to be, can certainly pull things off of the agenda at that time. And simply because the item is not ready for full action by the council. And so, it can be done in two different ways. As far as, the other one is just to clean up, general public. Mayor request, 5.4 is, any member of the city council or general public may request items for consideration of placement by submitting those items to the city secretary, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Under, the same thing with 5.5 or 6.7.
On 5.4 currently?
Yes.
How does it handle?
Any member of the city council or general public may request items on the agenda by submitting. It's very similar.
What is the distinctionment of consideration?
Only thing that's being added is for consideration of placement on the agenda. It's just a word.
And who makes that consideration?
Any member of the general public.
Well, any member.
Anybody's asked the same question I had. Who determines if actually it makes or not? The way I read it would be that to make or deny.
I read it as someone gets to decide.
Okay.
And the way I understood it before is if it's submitted, it would go on the agenda.
So, take out consideration?
I think it would go up for consideration in either the mayor or the council or the, or it be referred to a committee to, gets to decide. How would you do it?
I kinda like the way it was. So, I just didn't know.
I mean, there's nothing wrong with that. These are just suggestions.
I think you might want to clarify something. Down there it says, may request items be placed, even on the old one. So, again, it's still a request. So, you might want to consider that.
Requesting consideration.
Yeah, right. So, take out the word consideration.
It's still a request to be placed. So, who would allow for a request or please request.
Okay.
But if you do that, it still doesn't answer how it gets on the agenda.
I just want, I just want, I just wanted to read that the city council, general public may place items on the agenda. That'd be my vote.
I don't see a problem with that, really.
I know, of course, you think, well, maybe what prevents some crazy person from going out there that just starts saying, I'm gonna put all these things on the agenda. I guess that could happen. I mean, it's never happened in ten years I've been doing it before.
Well, now that you spoke.
It probably will. And I look forward to the fun. It'll make it exciting up here. I promise you. And then we can get back and revisit this.
My phone's ringing over here. There's about fourteen items.
But I think that's one thing that I've always interpreted and I thought was always unique about this policy was the fact that that could happen. Because so many cities struggle with, how do we ever get other items on the agenda that the mayor or the popular group or the council doesn't get to control. It's a huge problem. And I thought that was unique here, that kind of anybody would say, let's just go put it up there. I mean, take action on it.
This is one way. This is, this is another, a second way. First way of doing it is bring it up and having any council member be able to bring it up at the beginning and for future consideration. And the other is to do it here. So, everybody in agreement there on the committee?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We'll do that. So, we will leave this one, except for the change of the city manager, city secretary and mayor or applicable chairman. Okay? We, the reading of the minutes is just to clean up. Those minutes are sent out to everyone. So, you have those. The 6.7, under ordinances, resolutions and motions. Excuse me, 6.4, that number was changed. But I think for everybody else, it's.
6.4 on yours.
On theirs? Okay, good. The ordinances, resolution should not be presented to the council without first being looked at by the city attorney. Anybody have a problem with that? Okay. Yes.
You might want to add contracts to that as well. Just a suggestion.
Anybody have a problem with that? Okay, got you. The next one is, again, the change from administrator to manager. And then on the last page, ordinance resolution. And the distribution of ordinance is by the city secretary as part of the agenda package. So, that's that. The, the next item is the exceptions of a majority vote rule shall apply where required by charter, ordinance or state law, frankly. Is there any kind of issue with this? Randy and I talked about this one a little bit earlier. You didn't have a problem with this, I don't believe. Did you, Randy? And it's just a kind of a cleanup in a shortened way, if so.
Did the state statute change the supermajority wording that we had for?
The statute allows the city have ordinance requiring a three-year vote. And then y'all removed that requirement.
We changed the ordinance.
So, it's up to the city. We did have it and then y'all removed it.
Okay, but it was, it was by local choice rather than state.
State choice.
I think that was a mistake, but that, somebody needs to revisit that at some point and see if that needs to be reinstated, I believe.
We did that with regard to the planning and zoning.
Right.
So, we did take a supermajority until we arrived at the planning.
But there's a purpose for having that in. And again, I think that needs to be reconsidered.
How does that seem, Phil?
I'm good with that.
There was a reason we changed it too, if you recall.
Well, but we're not discussing that. We're just discussing.
We're not discussing that, but.
Discussing the, these can always be changed by any council, council at any time. The fact is, we'll have the history of it anyway.
Right. Looking for ordinance.
Yeah, that's exactly it. 6.1, there's not really a whole lot. Other than voice votes will be used on all the issues unless mayor or council member requests a roll call vote. That's our only plan. Under 6.4, ordinance passage procedure. You know, mayor, I mean, it's, this is just two signs, frankly. If we go down to 6.5, it's just a cleanup. There is an area here under eight, section eight, under 8.3. Okay? And in our visit, we were advised that we ought to have a discussion about this. And this has to do with when we're here and we're hearing and we're hearing from citizens or we're hearing, we're conducting a hearing. Our present thing states that all remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member there on. No person other than members of the council and the person having the floor shall be permitted to enter into any discussion either directly or through the members of the council. No questions shall be asked of the council members except through the presiding officer. The mayor may ask questions of the relevant department director at his or her discretion. Statements made by the mayor or department director may only be statements of fact. No discussion or consideration may occur. Okay? That is not the way we typically operate here. And do you want to make it like this, somewhat rigid? Or do you want to make it towards more, that's the key thing. In other words, do you want to have the give and take where somebody can be out here, they make a presentation and somebody on the council asks questions and so you get a conversation going? Or do you want it to be more formal and leave it up to the mayor to decide how questions are asked and who?
I'm really uncomfortable with only allowing the mayor to ask questions of someone that's making a presentation to us because his questions and mine may not be the same. And my question may prompt a question from him or vice versa. Now, I'd prefer it to be, I understand you don't want members of the audience conversing with each other, but for a member of the council to ask a question of somebody that's making a presentation would be.
And remember, we're talking about in, now in the future, in the future council. And remember, we're talking about in, now in the future, in the future councils, because right now, it's kind of open.
It is.
And it's, it's, everybody is, can ask questions.
This is really.
You're afraid to do that.
Is this just regarding the citizens' general discussion, or does this include?
Any kind of thing, I think.
So this would include public events as well?
So how would they know, how would the department director know? No, I'm sorry. Wait, where am I going? How would they know what questions we want to ask? If I have a que- I mean, how are? I'm with you, Alan. That doesn't make any sense to.
Citizens' general discussion's not gonna have a particular item on the agenda for discussion. That's just gonna be for citizens to voice.
That's right.
Whatever they wanna voice, and that, we shouldn't be discussing on that.
This is more.
On those matters, you continue.
This is really more for the hearings and whatnot that we have people come.
Right. I, I don't know.
And you know, we've had people out here that were presenting hearings. Some are planning and zoning, and you know, we ask them to get up and speak, and there is back and forth.
I don't know about P and Z.
Some, some councils do not allow that. They allow them to make a presentation, but as far as questions back and forth in the council, they don't do it.
Well, as you and I discussed earlier, uh, as far, I don't know about P and Z. I've been to some of their meetings, but I've been to all of these. I don't see us having a problem with that. You may wanna specify kinda how you want it, but we've been pretty lax about that back and forth, and I don't think y'all change it. I think y'all have that. Y'all think it needs to be changed and more strict, or the, I'll get, you can go look at Robert's Rules, and it'll say that you gotta go through the, uh, mayor for everything.
Okay.
Chairman of the board. So, but do, I'd leave it up to y'all to think, or tell me whether or not you think that it's worked well in the past. I think it's worked well.
Thank you, Randy. Randy and I had this discussion today, too, earlier, and, and felt like that this, that we need to have this discussion among committee members before we take a vote.
I think it needs to stay the way it is.
Even under Robert's Rules, that would give the mayor the ability to open up the floor, wouldn't it?
Yes.
There was gonna be following that.
Strict, strictly, as I recall, I don't read every night, too much. But, uh.
I'm surprised.
I know you thought I did.
It's good bedtime reading.
Yeah, it puts you asleep. I really think the strict interpretation of that is that you have to go through the, you have to get permission to do things through the chairman. And I don't know whether he can open it up or not. I'd have to just go look. But as I say, I don't think that's what y'all wanna do. I think that we can, I think that we can, uh, change Robert's Rules where it suits our purpose.
Where y'all agreeable, didn't we leave this like it is?
I would be agreeable to that.
Good, thank you.
So we're, we're leaving it the way that it was. We're striking the red.
Right.
Okay.
The rest is written communications on eight point seven. Oh, excuse me, eight point four. That has to do with anybody packing up in council vans, and they need to be removed, and I think we all kind of agree with that. The written communications has to do with may address a council with written communication regarding any matters determined to be. Over which the council has control, that is, mailing or emailing such communication to city secretary, mailing or emailing such communication to individual council members, all members of the council shall have an email addressed issued by the city. That's what we've got right now. Okay, are there any particular items here that we've talked about that you wanna go into further? Nope. Other members of the council? Are you comfortable with these things that we have discussed?
Yes.
Yes. Are you willing to? For us to vote on this and send this on to the council?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, but I hear a motion to that effect with the changes that we have discussed tonight, which we will get back to you, but present these to the council next full council meeting.
I would make the motion to recommend these to, for council approval with the changes as written tonight and the, um, changes to those changes that we decided on this evening.
Okay. Maybe we have a motion in a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those no. Thank you. The. Next item we'd like to propose is discuss, uh, two different vacancies. Coming up, we have people that we have talked to in the past about these two vacancies. A little bit different with this committee and.
That's our motion.
Have any problem about us doing this ahead of time and making this official on May the seventeenth or eighteenth, thereabouts. And the reason being, one of the people that is going off the council has applied for the, has applied for a, uh, appointment to the, to one of our boards of commissioners in this particular case. We would be talking about the board of adjustment. And we have somebody who's presently on the board of adjustment that would need to stay there until, uh, the new, uh, person goes on the board. And that person on the board of adjustment has asked to be, uh, appointed to the, or nominated for the seat of board. So, uh, the, the people we're talking about, Kelly John Nance is presently on the seat, uh, excuse me, on the board of adjustment. And, uh, we interviewed her. We interviewed her for CDA. And at that point, we talked about her going on when there was a vacancy on CDA. And, uh, and she's agreed to, uh, to serve on the board of adjustment until such time that we would consider her for the seat of board. We have in our midst Alan Nix, uh, who has served on the board of adjustment before. And will be going off this council on May the seventeenth and has asked for consideration and, and made an application to be put on the board of adjustment or CDA or planning and zoning. And we will have, if we move Kelly John over on May the seventeenth, we could move Alan Nix into that position at the same time. And that way, we have both, uh, we have the people on both. So, what would be, how, how does the committee feel about it? And Alan, you'll have to.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna abstain from this, and if it makes the committee more comfortable, I'll step out of the room. I'll leave that to y'all's discretion.
That might be a good idea.
I'll let y'all discuss it in my absence, but I, I know I need to abstain from the discussion and the vote.
Yes, sir. How does the committee, how are the other two members of the committee feel about this? As I understand, Stacy, if we can do this and do it ahead of time, there's nothing in our, in the rules or regulations or anything else that says we cannot.
Right, you just can't do it.
A point ahead of time.
You will serve on, on the third day of the bill.
Neither one of them will be official until after that day.
After that day.
Randy, do you see any problem with that?
Well, I don't know why you're doing it, number one.
Well, we're just going.
Excuse me?
Just to get it done.
Uh, I, I don't know anything to keep you from it, if, if he's not gonna, if Alan is not gonna serve on the board of adjustment before he, uh, gets off the council. So I think you can do it.
I mean, I guess to Randy's point, I mean, is there, is there a rush to get it done?
No, except that our next full council meeting is on the third of May. Is that not correct? I believe that's correct. It's on the third of May, and so this would be presented to them on May the third, anyway. And the next time would be on the seventeenth. Which would, when we're gonna canvass the vote, I assume, and, and install the new, um, council here. So. There's no big push either way to do this. The only reason I thought we go ahead, we've discussed this thing for the last two months, so.
Up to the council, I think you can do it.
Any other comments?
I mean, if.
You've.
Nothing keeping us from it.
I don't anticipate that there would be any, any issues, but we would be appointing something that wouldn't take place until there's a new council in place. There may be others that have, would like to have their voice heard on that.
That's a good point. That's a good point. Justin, it looks like you got a question.
I just, I think Randy brings up a good point, that, you know, I mean, it's, uh.
Why now?
Yeah, I mean, there's no rush, and Alan may have a change of heart anyway, so.
Don't blame him.
I just, I don't, I mean, it's over the same boat either way, so.
Then what we will do is, if, if. Y'all are, and I have a.
I mean, it's not that I don't think that it needs, I mean, we're gonna have to fill it.
We're gonna have to fill it one way or the other.
But, I don't.
What we can do then, and we can put it off until next time, and, and actually, uh, come either on May the seventeenth in a special meeting, which we're gonna have, anyway, or, uh, we do it the very next council meeting. Alan?
If I may suggest, it may kind of, it may ball up the works a little bit, but if you made the nominations tonight and in the, the motion made it rather than to go to the next council meeting, which is normally what we do, make the nomination, or, or make the, the motion say the nominations will be advanced to the new council when sworn in on the seventeenth. That way, if you just wanna, if, if you wanna keep the.
Cover more bases.
If you wanna keep the committee in and not have to meet after the third, then that may be a way to do it. Randy, you go ahead.
Well, how do you feel about that?
I'm fine with that.
I'm good with that, too. So, do I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Okay?
Second.
We got a motion and a second, that we will nominate Kelly John Nance for the seat of board, moving her from, moving her from board of adjustment to the seat of board. And nominating Alan Nix to the board of adjustment to fill her unexpired term. And that this will come before the next, uh, council meeting, the new council, uh, which is, it's all on the seventeenth.
Okay.
That's good.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oops, done. Okay, good. We'll get Alan back in here. Folks, we're coming down to it. We're almost halfway through, and this is part of the agenda.
And then I get to start talking, so, you know, that's gonna take a while.
Uh, Alan is.
No, it's all true, that's why.
Brandon wanted this to be a memorable meeting.
It will be.
We were gonna discuss a little bit. Now, if you recall, we've talked about the downtown lighting. Uh, we've discussed it in the committee. It's been presented to the council. At the, uh, council meeting, not the last meeting, but the meeting before that, we tabled it until further information could come with regard to the cost of installation. The cost for the lighting downtown was, our bed was, it's a sole source bed, was sixty-nine thousand dollars.
Yeah, seventy, seventy-five-ish, yeah.
And, and the, the, uh, but we didn't have a, a solid, uh, cost on the installation of that. And we also had another question, too, that with regard to the lumens, the ability to light up, depending on the location of the, of the new streetlights. So. Those questions, I believe, have just about been answered now. And, but they, we haven't really talked about it in the committee, and so we thought that tonight it would be a good thing, because then, at the next council meeting, we can, uh, move that it come off the table and be brought to the council for final discussion. And so Alan has done some background work and got another prize in for us on the installation, and as well as some information with regard to brightness or the lumens that's, uh, that these lights are going to have. Alan?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Let me start with the information I don't have. We had a local electric company take a look at the, the question about the possibility of relocating the lights to the opposite side of the street of the square. That has caused a little bit of consternation on the part of Text Dot. However, uh, we are still waiting for a cost estimate for the moving of the, of the, the poles. It will be relatively expensive. I'll just put it like that. Uh, the second thing that I've been asked on several occasions is, have I talked to the county? Yes, I have. I've talked to the county judge. He has requested information so it can be presented to the, the, uh, commissioner's court. Their next meeting is on the twenty-fifth. I anticipate having enough information at that point to be able to, to have it taken to the, the commissioner's court. The, uh, other issue that I don't have answered is, uh, actually, I guess that's it. Okay, now what I do know. Uh, our original bid to, uh, to, uh, install the lights, it said, uh, it was, uh, twelve thousand seven hundred, I believe it was. We have a second bid from B and L Electric. The quote is seventy-four hundred and twenty-five dollars. That is for all eight poles. That's allocating forty hours of labor, I believe it is, and the rental of a crane or a man lift for, I believe it's four hours. It did have the, the proviso that essentially, if they get into something that they don't know is there, then that may cost more. We have also talked with, uh, the way Text Dot got involved, of course, was, was we reached out to them to discuss the lighting requirements for the, the intersection. They have had conversations with the lighting company. The lighting company originally told us that they anticipated to have to change to a double head, uh, lighting fixture. However, upon further analysis, I feel like an NFL referee, upon further review, uh, they now feel that they, they will be able to satisfy, uh, Text Dot with the configuration of all eight poles, meaning the two on the corners and the one, the ones. with the configuration of all eight poles, meaning the two on the corners and the one, the ones in the center. He, he feels like, uh, he spoke with Rick Price of our Parks Department, and, and he being the representative, said that they're, they're confident that they can get enough, enough lighting out of one, one fixture with one in the middle of the block, and we have a, a, a lighting pattern that they can, that they'll be able to fulfill. The, the, uh, final thing is the bolt pattern for the, the bolts that we have. There was some question as to whether or not they would be able to, to match our bolt pattern. However, again, they believe they can. There's gonna have to be a little bit of modification, but not much to their, to their base. But they don't seem to be unnerved about that, that they being Spring City.
So that would mean that we can use the existing basis?
Yes, sir.
And get the right amount of lumens?
Yes, sir.
Necessary?
Yes, sir.
To brighten up?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the street and, and whatnot. And we're looking at seventy-four hundred dollars, basically seventy-five hundred dollars for the installation, plus roughly, it's sixty-nine nine, so roughly seventy thousand for the, the lights.
Right.
Around, and it's a two to six month wait, time wait. And they're good. And the price is going to be good for that period of time.
That's my understanding, yes, sir. Uh, the, the one thing I would recommend that, that you do, and, and guys, I, you know me, I'm gonna hedge on the bet that it's gonna be the safest. And so what I would recommend is, rather than coming back with a, we're gonna spend sixty-nine nine and seventy-five hundred, or whatever it is, I would recommend a not-to-exceed price, probably a hundred thousand dollars. That gives you, in the event that the electric company does get in and say, oh, boy, timeout, we, we got a mess here. That gives you wiggle room to, to be able to have staff continue with the, with the installation and not have to come to council for, oh, we're, we're ten thousand dollars over, or something like that. Just give, I would, I would suggest that you give us a, a contingency amount. It doesn't have to be the thirty thousand, or, or whatever the, I said a hundred thousand dollars. But give some amount for contingency, please.
Well, right now, we're looking at seventy-seven thousand for.
Yes, sir.
If you don't have to do any bases?
I'm sorry?
Right. If you don't have to do the bases.
Correct, and, and we want to avoid doing the bases as much as we can. I was, I, the way it was explained to me is, what we see above ground under those, those two or three foot, uh, stanchions, those things go about six feet into the ground, and the, the bolts go probably another ten to fifteen feet below that. And that's what you need to hold up a twenty-five foot ten inch pole, is you need that kind of stability. So it's not, you know, here, here's this little uh, base, and we've jabbed some, some poles and some bolts in. No, it's, it's a substantial thing. And that's why I say that the, to move them across the street will be an expensive endeavor.
How do you guys feel then?
Alan, I'm confused, the, the bid says freight allowed, but it also says F O B factory, and I know enough about motor freight to know the freight could be a substantial amount on that because of the length and the weight.
I was told that, that the freight wasn't included in that price.
It was?
Yes, sir, that's what I was told.
But it says F O B factory.
It sure does, and we can clarify that.
I'd, I'd sure like to have that, 'cause that could run several thousand dollars.
Thank you for pointing that out, I, I, we've had that discussion, we just have not gotten it right.
Alan?
Sir?
And you can get that, I mean, that can be received in writing. And also, the other thing that's still hanging out there is to, the approach to the county as, as
Yes, sir.
Potential partners?
Yes, sir.
On this particular project? And if that's going to be done by the twenty-fifth, is that the meeting that they?
That's the meeting day, yes, sir.
Okay, then we would know, hopefully, something by May the third?
I would think so. I mean, unless they...
They're gonna meet on the, they're gonna meet then?
I don't know the dynamics in, on the court right now. And, and so I don't know if they're gonna say, wait a minute, we wanna study this, or, this is the first time we've heard it. I mean, I, we have a, a committee system where it's heard before it goes to council, and most of them, most of the council members either attend or see what's going on when they see the, the committee report. I don't know how their vote's gonna go. I don't know if they're gonna table it, I don't know if they're gonna say yes, I don't know if they're gonna say no. We can just throw it out there.
This particular issue is already on the table for the council. So we would, if we have these questions answered, are you comfortable with us taking it off the table at the next meeting? And going ahead and taking it for, for council?
Oh, I believe so. If this committee's...
Are you okay with the numbers that we've come up with so far? The answers we've received?
I want to move forward if we're not going to.
So can you ask, I'm sorry. Can you ask them to make sure that, about the shipping and how long these prices are good for? Because if we're, I mean, I'm not see, I didn't see anywhere on here where it says price good for?
Yeah.
Six months.
Six months, or terms of sale, but that's not, all right. Well, we're already past that.
Six months for the original.
Yeah, it does say, hold it for six, it's down toward the end.
Number four, under notes, pricing held for six months.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
And that's, that should be, I, I believe that was February.
Yeah.
So that would be, that would hold it till August.
And Alan, if you look, that number two said price includes one shipment to Stevieville, Texas.
Yeah.
So...
There's eight bolts.
But that's a conflict with what it says in the other page.
Right.
So that needs to be clarified, that needs to be clarified. And the Commissioner's Court on this side needs to be clarified.
Yes.
Well, that's next Monday.
Okay. All right, and then I don't think this requires any vote or anything like that from the, from the committee, but if you're comfortable with this, then this is the direction we're going, okay?
I'm comfortable with it, personally.
Okay. Leanne, are you comfortable with it?
Yes.
Justin?
Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable getting answers.
That's right.
On the, on the questions on this and from the county vote.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
We've done the legwork on it, and we can make the presentation to them, but I'd rather have their information and input into it before we commit, since it is a shared area.
That's exactly right, we, so we should have that. Okay, with that, Mr. Mayor, this nominee committee is, is...
Sure.
Well, I can go ahead.
You got six minutes for making an hour, so.
But who's counting?
Who's counting?
Not me.
All right, let's see if we can get this in six minutes.
There you go.
Let's make this quick.
We will now open into Parks and Leisure Services Committee and Mr. Trustal.
So last year, during the budget cycle, we approved fifty thousand dollars to do a Parks Master Plan. Kelly is requesting that we recommend a contract for professional services with Vista Planning and Design. The reason we chose Vista Planning and Design, just so everybody's familiar, is he is currently working on our downtown revitalization plan. It is not stop policy, this is Mitch. Mitch is, does this by trade specifically, he's just assisting with that, so he already has some historical knowledge here. He's already worked with some stuff, especially with the park and its connection to downtown, so we thought he was an appropriate person to look at. So we're just looking to come out of this with a positive recommendation to council. So does anybody have any questions regarding this?
Really good. Sounds better.
All right, with that, we'll entertain a motion then, to take this to council?
So moved.
Second.
All right. We just need to vote on it now?
Yeah.
Let's vote on it. We don't ever get to this part. It's like, we, we always have stuff on the agenda, and we never actually get to this part of it, so I'm not sure if we should do this or not. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes? All right, so next up on our agenda is some stuff that Kelly found out at Splashville recently. So we're gonna talk a little bit more about Splashville. You wanna tell them what you found out at Splashville and kinda what we're needing to do out there?
Yeah, thank you. First, I'd like to apologize that I put the information on the wrong document for tonight, so. But just a little update, Splashville and Splashpad is thirteen years old. It was opened in two thousand nine. What we're talking about specifically is the UV system with the Splashpad. The UV system is utilized to lower chemical usage by up to thirty to fifty percent, and achieves safer water by eliminated pathogens and viruses. When we, and we, council approved on the eighteenth of January budget amendment for work to be completed at Splashville, which is including the cleaning of the UV filter housing unit, when they came out the first of April to start that project, they ran into the control panel, which operates the UV system, was corroded, was not working properly, couldn't even turn it on and off, and the locking mechanism, which is kind of the safety feature for the box and the power, was not working, and three of the circuit boards are rusted. So, a UV system is very vital for spray ground body of water, and so the Texas Administration Code states that all interactive water features or fountains, either a standalone or combined with a pool or water, requires maintain of additional sanitation, which is UV light filtration. So that protects the public against infection by the parasite Clitoris sporidium, which is something that's very commonly found in spray parks. So our options are, we can not repair this or fix this, which means we, we, we resurfaced the Splashpad just a few months ago to get it ready for the operational season, along with the other projects of replastering tile and fixing the concrete grout. Or we can look at fixing the control board, which is a twenty-eight thousand nine hundred fifty dollar product, and this is on buy board, so we'll not have to go out to bid. Our staff is recommending tonight to utilize the funds from other budgeted projects this year that are not a top priority. They're kind of more of a needs or wants to make improvements, but we'd really like to get the UV system updated and running, so we can have the full system of the pool running this season. And so we're looking at utilizing twenty-five thousand from the O Y C outfield fencing that was budgeted and approved, and then the sound system at the aquatic system, uh, excuse me, the sound system at Splashville for this year, five thousand dollars, which is a combined total, total of thirty thousand dollars, that lives up just a little bit for contingencies or if something else occurs.
So just a little background on that, this is not, you know, this is something, I mean, Ashley works with this all the time in that specific room, but that, this is not something we could have really known about, that thing's gonna work until it doesn't work. But there will be ongoing things we have to do, so this will get us through this year. Next year, we have to look at something else, either moving to a, to a tablet chlorine system. But typically, in this environment, you're gonna have your chlorination and your acid feeders are going to be in separate environments that are ventilated. That is not the situation here, and it's caused major corrosion in that room. So this will get us through this year, and then we'll look towards a budget next year to figure out how we attack those problems, 'cause moving forward, we would have this issue again every, probably ten years. And so we need to fix those things. So I did ask Kelly to look at her budget and see, so that we didn't do a budget amendment tonight, and I don't know that I asked her to look for all the money, but she found all the money, so. Do we need to vote on that, to move this, so that she can spend that money on this? All right, we'll all entertain a mo, if, does anybody have any questions?
No, I just, I wanna appreciate the work that Kelly did to find the money from other budgeted items, so appreciate you working to do that.
All right, with that, we'll entertain a motion?
So moved, to approve.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, six thirty, you're good.
Thank you.
All right, that will end our committee meetings, but we'll call us open to a special city council meeting. And we will enter into executive session to compliance with provisions of the Texas Open Meetings Act, so Chapter D, Government Code, burns Texas codes annotated in accordance with section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one, consultation with attorney, and section five-five-one dot zero-seven-four, personnel matters. and Section 551 dot zero seven four, personnel matters.
We have, do we have some motion from executive session?
Mayor, I make the motion that we offer our staff to make the payment of settlement cause number four oh six dash C V dash two fifty one dash Y.
Second. Have a motion second for discussion. See if all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Since unopposed, motion passes. Any other motions?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve accepting the city manager's request to retire effective May first as discussed in executive session.
Second. Have a motion of second discussion. See if you vote all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Since unopposed, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion that we appoint Jason King as interim city manager effective May one at an interim annualized rate of hundred and forty thousand per year.
Second. Have motion second in discussion. See if you vote all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. It is seven twenty seven and we are now adjourned.